Folks, we'll call the January 7th, 2014, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners order. And let me say before we have the invocation that Vice Chairman Marvin Norman is not with us tonight, his mother-in-law passed away, so if you would keep that family in your thoughts and prayers. And he's a beautiful man and a great record of attendance, and he's seldom missed since the meeting, so this is for very good reason, and I'm sure they'd appreciate your thoughts and prayers. But let's have our invocation for now. Father, we come to you again, and we just thank you for all the blessings you give us. We thank you for the way you blessed our county. And tonight, we do lift up Marvin and his family. They're good folks, folks that love you, and they're loved by many folks, and we just pray you'd comfort them as only you can this evening. And Father, we come to you rejoicing this evening. We've got a new member of the county family here, a little writer, and we're thankful for him, and we pray you'll bless our county manager and his family. We pray the little writer will know you and that you'll direct his path, and you'll bless him, and you'll give Ron and his wife wisdom as they raise their little guy, and we're just rejoicing that this evening. And we pray for wisdom as we go about the county's business, that you'll guide and direct us, and we'll act in a way that it please you and will best serve the people of this county. We ask it in your name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Smith, I believe you have at least one adjustment to the agenda from the staff this evening.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to just remove the economic development portion of our closed-session agenda.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board? If not, I'd offer a motion we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have no presentations or appointments for the board this evening, so we'll move directly to a public hearing. We'll declare this meeting to be a public hearing regarding to the installment of financing with Energy United Electric Membership Corporation. So I believe Ms. Blumenthal, or Ms. Robertson, excuse me, I'm still learning.
This has been before you several times, I believe the first time was in October 2012, for the board to consider the financing of critical HVAC improvements for West Iredell High School. This will be a $1.3 million interest-free loan from USDA to Energy United, and Energy United will loan the funds to the county for these improvements at West Iredell. Dr. Miller provided to me an estimate of annual savings and utility costs at $40,000 a year at West Iredell. These were provided to him by Energy United. I estimate the cost to close this, the application fee for the local government commission, title insurance, and legal fees will probably be in the $8,000 range.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Robertson? Let me say that Dr. Miller was here earlier, and they had a sprinkler head that blew off, I think he said at Harmony.
Harmony?
Yeah. So he had to rest up there and attend to that, so we certainly understand his absence, but he wanted to make it. Known that he was here, but he got that call while he was on route over here and had to turn around and leave, so.
Okay. My intent is, if the board wants me to proceed with this after the public hearing tonight, I'll file the application before the end of the week, and at your next meeting, I'll have all the financing documents for you to approve.
Okay. If there's no question, Ms. Robertson, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in regard to this? If not, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
You don't really have to have a motion tonight. That's okay.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Administrative matters, Mr. Smith?
The first item is going to be presented by Susan Robertson, and this is a request to approve three ISS lottery applications and Budget Amendment Number 16.
The school system has three additional projects that the school board has approved for lottery funding. Those, I believe, were included in your package. The lottery proceeds are available in the county's account at the State Treasurer's Office, and I would request that you approve them so we can draw those funds down.
Okay. Any questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment 16.
We have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 16, and this request from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, which is B, is a request from David Morton to approve, or for approval to sign a memo of agreement with the North Carolina State Highway Patrol through NC Emergency Management, and also to approve Budget Amendment Number 17.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm here this afternoon to ask you to approve, it's basically a grant, North Carolina Highway Patrol, working with the NC Emergency Management Homeland Security Branch, was able to secure a grant through the Department of Homeland Security to upgrade some VIPER sites, and the only stipulation was that it had to be a pass-through grant with local jurisdictional participation. So they have asked us to cooperate, and they'll be upgrading. We now have three VIPER sites in Iredell County, so they'll be upgrading them to the new digital technology. And this is just a request, and you approve that, for Mr. Smith to sign that and approve Budget Amendment Number 17.
Okay. So there's no local match? It's just 100% pass-through?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Morton? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Will we approve Budget Amendment 17?
We have a motion to approve this request and Budget Amendment Number 17 from Commissioner Boone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David, you can go ahead and see.
Our other request this afternoon is the domestic preparedness region sub, which is made up of several counties in our area, was awarded a $132,768 to purchase some mounted generators on trailers, to purchase five of those and place them strategically around the region. Iredell was picked to receive one of those generators, and we're just here this afternoon to get you to approve our acceptance of the generator, and along with Budget Amendment Number 18.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on this? So the generator is already mounted on a trailer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, but the intent is so that they are available for use in Mecklenburg County or in that whole region?
Anywhere.
In the whole region. Do we have a place to put it?
Well, we're working on that. We're hoping to put it out for Cell D Services. If, I think that's going to work out. We talked with Mr. Smith and folks at Cell D Services, because they would probably be the ones to take it out and hook it up anyway, so.
I mean, it's a legitimate question if, I mean, are we going to have to build a shed somewhere to store it?
No. If all else fails, I think we can probably get it in one of the fire departments if we need to, to have it out of the way.
And how often will it have to be run in order to?
Well, I would think that for Cell D Services would put it on the same maintenance schedule as the other generators.
Okay.
I know they do our light towers, the light towers that we have, which are also generator. They put, they got them on a schedule, and I can't remember exactly. I think it's monthly that they run them, but I can't remember.
Fire them up for 10 minutes and back down?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
This doesn't really make a whole lot of difference in my decision-making here, but if that thing is called into service, are our folks responsible under a mutual aid agreement for taking it somewhere and setting it up, or that agency come and get it?
Well, we could be. I mean, I'm sure that if it was in the, I think it would be depending upon the situation, sir.
Okay.
If it was in a disaster situation in another county, they would probably ask us to bring it.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, I'm sure they'd return the favor if we needed it. Yeah. Okay. There's no other questions. The floor is open for a motion. I'd make a motion we approve this request and approve Budget Amendment Number 18. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Item D is a request to approve a three-year renewal of property lease for Harmony Convenience Site, and this is going to be presented by David Lambert, our Solid Waste Director.
We've been leasing the property that the Harmony Convenience Site's located on since 1983 from Kathleen Martin. The lease is set to expire on March 31st of 2014, so I'd like to request renewal of that lease for an additional three-year period. It's a regular budgeted item for our department, so there's no, you know, nothing out of the ordinary. So just like to seek approval of the lease.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lambert?
I know there's been some discussion about trying to purchase a permanent site for that transfer station. What's the status of that now?
Well, that is something that we've, we're still looking at. Ms. Martin is not willing to sell that site. She, she only likes a lease, and we're very limited as what we can do on that site, so we have been looking for other parcels of land, but it's been a, been a pretty lengthy process.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I maybe ask for a little clarification? David, even if we did find a site, it's going to take some time. We're probably going to have to have some overlap there anyway, so it is something that's high on our radar, as you're, you know, you will continue to see, but we'll, there's still going to be a need to have, you know, something in the interim.
Typically, on a project like that, the time you purchase land, go through design and construction, you're looking at two years anyway.
Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And item E is a request for approval of the December 17th, 2013 minutes.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion.
Motion for approval of the minutes comes from Commissioner Boone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith. That brings us to, we have no announcements that I'm aware of of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, and no appointments. Unfinished business? Public comment, period? New business? No one else has anything? I have a few comments prepared. A few folks would indulge me. I'm going to use this opportunity, if you would bear with me, to set a little, a few parameters for what I think like as we approach budget season that we ought to keep in mind. I don't usually entitle such comments as this, but if I was going to put a title on my comments tonight, it would be, what would Iredell, Iredell's economy look like in 2014? From my point of view, the primary hurdle Iredell will continue to face economically in 2014 will be a growth in revenue that is lower than historical averages. 2014 should be better than 2013, but only marginally so. The primary reason is the lack of any pro-growth fiscal policy enacted and signed into law. We should remember that each time the economy has faltered in the past, it has been a reduction in marginal and corporate tax rates, and deregulations that have restarted the economy and ushered in a sustained period of expansion. It is worthy to note that the U.S. has, now has the highest corporate tax rate in the world. This is, remains a substantial barrier to investment and the repatriation of profits earned elsewhere. Inaction on fiscal policy has left practically all of the work of sustaining the economy to the monetary policy of the Federal Reserve, which regulates the money supply through open-market operation, the reserve ratio, and the discount rate. Most attention has been given to the open-market operations, which is the buying and selling of bonds by the central bank. The Federal Reserve is by far the largest holder of U.S. Treasury bonds. We should remind ourselves that in 1913, when the Federal Reserve Act was enacted, it did not permit the Federal Reserve to buy government bonds or securities. The Fed never used its authority to control the market until 1942, which is totally understandable. Recently, however, the Federal Reserve has abused its power with now three separate phases of quantitative easing. This accommodative monetary policy of buying government securities at an unprecedented rate has enabled profligate spending without the discipline of a free bond market, which would impose discipline on spending decisions. If interest rates were not artificially low, the interest payments alone would have increased the deficit annually by an estimated $700 billion annually over the last several years. This accommodative policy has also removed the imperative for physical reforms, physical tax reforms in the legislative process. An additional problem with artificially low rates is that they distort the flow of capital. With the interest rates so low, investors seek other investment vehicles with higher rates of return. This inevitably leads to asset bubbles, i.e. the tech bubble, the housing bubble, fluctuation in commodity and precious commodity prices, oil in particular, perhaps now some estimate, to some degree, an equity bubble. Their eventual dire consequences of these policies are lack of policy, which time does not afford an expiration of this evening. Suffice it to say that the snake can only eat its own tail for a short time. We give this dismal presentation, but these facts are not abstract, and they have, have had, and will continue to have, a negative impact on our local economy everywhere, and Iredell is no exception. Economic growth resulting from sound pro-growth fiscal policy will result in increased economic activity and higher revenue for local governments. At present, such policy enactment is highly unlikely. How does this impact Iredell? Experience has taught me that the best way to determine if our local economy is growing is to watch the evaluation of resulting revenues from commercial personal property. When they are increasing at a healthy rate, the business community is demonstrating confidence by investing in capital equipment. This translates to good-paying jobs, subsequently to increasing real estate evaluation and tax revenues from property and sales taxes. Capital investment has been flat for some time, and at all likelihood will remain well below historical averages. In the absence of this investment, prudence demands that we proceed cautiously. Businesses accumulated substantial sums and retained earnings, but continue to demonstrate great reluctance to invest. Only sound fiscal policy can remove this trepidation. Some modest increase in property valuation has materialized, but much of these gains have come from existing properties recovering from the 2008, 2011 timeframe. Sales tax revenues have improved substantially, but should be handled most carefully. The economy is likely being held up by the loose monetary policy rather than being pushed up by a strong and wise fiscal policy. Iredell's economy will continue to improve at a modest rate, which will remain well below historical averages. Therefore, we should be careful not to substantially increase. And this, this is the guidelines that I'd like to lay forth as we approach this budget. Therefore, we should be careful not to substantially increase our base cost of operations, and should not incur sizable debt, which is to be serviced only through sales tax revenues. Sales tax revenues are highly cyclical, and improving numbers can evaporate as quickly as they appear. Debt should be incurred when necessary based on more solid revenue sources, hopefully the revenues from a dynamic economy described earlier. The recovery from the Great Recession has been slow and far less robust than recoveries in the past. Many sectors of the economy have yet to see a turnaround. I talk daily with people who continue to struggle. We will eventually see widespread improvements. Markets adapt and overcome. It is their nature. Politicians and policies come and go while markets innovate and change. We should not grow weary. It will get better. Take heart and continue to work hard, and things will eventually improve. In an age of increasing cynicism and downright skepticism and downright cynicism, let me commend my fellow commissioners and our staff. I know them well. I know their desire is to serve you well. They consistently demonstrate sound judgment and are here for the right reasons. We have no desire to run off with a punch bowl during the middle of someone's party. We simply believe that the first decision to make when contemplating a party is whether we can actually afford one. So I would instruct the staff at this point to be cautious as they approach requests for this budget, that they not substantially increase our base cost of operation, whether those requests will come internally or externally. Now, that's the economic forecast of Johnson going into 2014. Now, I do feel compelled to comment on a couple of other things. It continues to mystify me. While some people on the left side of the political spectrum are constantly in favor of physical and economic policy, which stifles innovation, stifles investment, and then, when they, when they do things detrimental to economic growth, then they complain that there's not enough money available. I can only deduce that it comes from their lack of ability to understand that government is the beneficiary of a growing and dynamic economy. But that, that has been a great frustration of mine for years, that they can't seem to understand that. The second thing, or third thing I'd like to say, and I'm going to have a little fun with this one, but it is a little bit discouraging. I guess it was three weeks ago, I began my day pretty much like I usually do. At my desk, about 6:30 in the morning, I was drinking coffee, and I was reading from Genesis, Chapter 15. I don't say that I read the Bible every morning, because I'm more pious than everyone else. I come from a strong Calvinist teaching, and I realize my own total inability, and I, that I am in constant need of correction, and that's why I do it. But nevertheless, I do it. As is my custom, I laid down the Bible, and I picked up the Wall Street Journal, and I read where we have slipped from 19th to 22nd among the 30 industrialized world in math scores. Somewhat dismayed, I do the third thing I do every morning, and the reporter here will be glad to hear this, I pick up the local copy of the Stateful Record and Landmark. And I learned that there's actually some earnest discussion among the school board and school administration that they're going to expand a sex ed class, in which they could conceivably teach our young people how to put a condom on a wooden prop. And then I paused and thought, surely I'm not the only one who sees the correlation here? Perhaps the reason that we slipped from 19th to 22nd in math is because in other countries, they're actually teaching math. Well, we're talking about condoms. Now, I'm sure the advocates of such a policy call themselves progressive, and I would agree with them. They are progressive. Progressively insane. Thank you very much. County managers report.
All right. We've got a few things I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. I'm going to give you a handout, and this is just for your information. If you remember, Stan Thompson came before us a month and a half, two months ago, and Stan, his PowerPoint didn't work, and he had asked that I just give you this information. These were the handouts from him. Really, I'm not advocating what he's, what he's got in here, other than just giving him what he's asked me to give you. And his intent was to basically get any favorable comments forwarded along to NC DOT if you're in favor of the 150 bridge being higher than what they're planning, and that's, that's basically what his request is. His contact information is in here, in case you do have questions. The second thing is just an FYI. We have opened up the application process for our Citizens Academy. This is something that we started last year, and it was a big success for us, and it's basically an education about county government. Was received very well. We, we really don't put, the money that is in it is negligible. It's basically staff time, and unless they're fibbing to me, our staff does enjoy doing it. So I think it's a successful thing, and I just wanted to get that out, that we have the application process open, and it's the first 20 people. We did have a waiting list last year. And the final item is, I sent out an email to you recently about the budget calendar, and I just wanted to see if you, if anyone has a problem with, and we don't have, have to have an answer tonight, but just kind of make, make sure this discussion continues, of going from several night meetings for our budget work sessions to possibly a day-long meeting, something similar to, you know, our day-long work sessions or retreats. You know, it might, might be better, might not, but since schedules do get kind of tight over that time, just wanted to throw that out as an option.
I realize that it's difficult to accommodate everyone's schedule, and I'm adaptable to doing whatever suits the board. But one disadvantage of a day-long session is that you have more information cram than you can process. It's easier to, you can process information better in, say, four two-hour segments and have time to think about it than one eight-hour segment. Mine just lays us over after, after an all-day session. So that, that is one, I think, one disadvantage.
Just for guidance, I'm not opposed to day meetings, but as is usually the case, I'd, I need some time to schedule. Folks at the store, if I could have preferably a couple of weeks' notice, to schedule some help in when I'm gone. And if all possible, I'd, I'd like to avoid Tuesdays, but if Tuesday works for everybody else, then I'll schedule freight in on another day, but.
I think I emailed you my conflicts.
Okay. Why don't we? Ken sort of, I'm not picking on anybody, Ken sort of the one who's in flux on this. Why don't you, why don't you work with Ron on a schedule that works for you?
Okay.
And then Ron emailed that to us, and then we'll tweak it as we need to be. Is that?
That'll work.
Because, I mean, you're the one that has the great conflict.
And the last thing, the last thing I want to do, because it is so comprehensive, is I want to, if you want to look at it in the budget, because I respect what you're saying, David, I want to give it the ample amount of time that it needs, so, okay. Well, we'll talk, and then- So, okay, well, we'll talk and then get back with you.
And if you're gonna do a half-day, Tuesday afternoons are easier than, Tuesday mornings where the hardest rub is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This time I'll move we go into closed session under 143, 318, 11A5 in regard to property acquisition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries and answers.[630.29]
I wondered if you heard from that coming out of that room?
No. Okay, I don't know.
There'll be no action taken as a result of our closed session. I offer a motion that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.